Okay, who's gonna do the presentation? Both of you together, or Jerry, or?
Did you want to do it, Mick?
I'm sure he'll chime in. He's our income tax.
So we've asked Jerry and Mickey to be here to talk to us about SB 1, the effects that we are possibly going to see in the next few years.
Yeah, so what I have here in the presentation, it's a lot of education, but then, you know, towards the end, we show the city of Frankfurt's impacts. They are projections. Obviously, we have to use certain assumptions. I know that Carol had sent out from LSA some of their initial projections, the impacts to the city for property tax losses. So we can kind of compare those, and they were, you know, somewhat similar to what they had. But if we just want to dive in, I think it's slide number three here. This just explains the current structure of local income tax. Just kind of a rough lecture, because I know that we do have some relatively new council members. So currently, the lit rate is set by the county council, since you guys are formerly a CAGIC county, county addressed gross income tax county. So the county council approves the rate. There's an expenditure rate cap of 2.5%. So your certified shares, public safety, and economic development taxes fall under that. And for the most part, that's distributed to the different units, mostly based off of property tax levy. That's kind of how it's allocated now. The total lit cap rate, so there are some other rates as far as, you know, the county, they have a lit jail, lit EMS that only the county receives. You guys have property tax relief, but that total cap is 3.75%. And then we have just some general data across all counties. So Randolph County is the highest, and then we have the average median. And then Clinton County specifically is at point, or 2.65%. And then we show the breakdown there. So certified shares, which that's deposited into your general fund, lit public safety, that's the lit public safety fund. Economic development goes into its own fund. Then Clinton County has, like I mentioned, lit jail, lit EMS. The city does not receive any of that. The county gets that. And then you guys have a 0.5% property tax relief amount, which is a, then, income taxpayer pays that, and then essentially, it would be a benefit on their property tax bill. But one thing to mention specifically, you know, in a higher circuit breaker community, it essentially is decreasing the circuit breaker, which quickly, circuit breaker is just a loss of revenue that the city doesn't ultimately receive. So that, keep that one in mind, because that plays a big part with Senate Bill into the future, going into 2028. So under the new structure, there's five different categories here, and you can see the red boxes are the ones that would be specific to the city of Frankfurt. But the way it is now, the, or what, with Senate Bill 1, and I don't think I mentioned this previously, this would be effect in 2028.
This is?
So for income taxes. Sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that previously. But at that point, there will be a county services income tax rate, which is a max of 1.2%. The adopting body is the county, and that would tax everybody within the county. And then all of that goes directly to the county. And then, and then there's fire protection and EMS, which is a cap of up to 0.4%. Once again, this is controlled by the county, and it is taxed on all individuals within the county. But then it is, its distribution is specifically, you know, fire territories, districts, municipal fire. So you guys would receive a portion of this. And then the language gets a little iffy, but potentially townships and volunteer fire as well. Then there is non-municipal civil taxing units. So this is kind of catch-all for all the other units outside of, you know, the city, the county, and some of the fire. But once again, the county has control over this rate, and it is all individuals residing in the county, and it specifically goes to these non-municipal taxing units. So amongst those three, you can see the total of 1.2, 0.4, and 0.2 is 1.8, but it is, those collectively cannot exceed 1.7%.
So according to this, we're no longer, the police would not be part of that. It's going to be fire and EMS, and then police would go into our other income tax?
Essentially, it would go into, yeah, your guys' portion of your 1.2% that you would be able to?
So police and fire would no longer share the PSA portion of it?
And then the next one over is small cities and towns. So any of them under 3,500, that max rate is 1.2%. This is controlled by the county as well. And this is all individuals residing in the county, except for any cities or towns that control their own rate, which is, so any cities and towns. Is Frankfurt the only one over 3,500?
Yes.
So essentially, if this was implemented, and say it was 1.2%, it would be everybody taxed outside of city of Frankfurt. And then the way that works, it's then distributed to those cities and towns, not Frankfurt. But the county, they could elect to keep 75, up to 75% of that off the top. And then the remaining 25% would get distributed to the other units. That's the max that the county could keep back prior to distributing, or it could be 50% or 25%, but that's just the max. So that's essentially another tool for the county, you know, as far as like, at least having the option. Now, the far-right one would be the one where you guys would fall under, which it's a max of 1.2%. You guys would control it, and it is only taxed on people within the city of Frankfurt.
Question?
Yes.
Back to the may not exceed 1.7%. That's the ones with the asterisk, correct? The three, first three?
Correct, yes.
And you said that equals 1.8%. So what if we want 0.4, what if, what if the county wants?
It'd be up to the county, pretty much. But they would have to, there's no way that all of these could be a max. They would have to make a decision on decreasing, or it could be a collective, like, decrease of point, like, only 0.15 and 0.35. But like, they would make that decision.
They get to make that decision?
Yeah.
So they can tell us a lower number if they want to keep the entirety of theirs, or they can work with us and diminish all three sections, or however that works. Now, the non, so do the townships, libraries, and others, do they get to make that choice, or does the county make that for them?
County.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, in, you know, Clinton County's situation, I mean, the county controls everything besides your guys' 1.2.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
So it's all up to them?
Yeah, and it, I mean, the way I look at it, I mean, there's going to have to be some kind of communication, you know, amongst, you know, all units, especially, you know, the county controlling this and showing, you know, what the impact is for the city as far as the loss on property taxes. And not just that, income taxes. If you guys wouldn't hypothetically be able to get to 0.4% showing like, how that works out.
So how would that work, like, on that fire protection? Because EMS is ran by the county, and the city has, so would there be a distribution made to the city?
The statute, the Senate Bill 1 statute doesn't state EMS, distribution for EMS. It's titled lit fire and EMS, but in the statute, it doesn't state any distribution for EMS. It's solely fire.
So it's solely fire?
Yeah.
What they're calling, what they're saying?
Partly, fire, you know, departments provide EMS. So I think they just lumped them together.
That's odd, isn't it? So they would set the rate for what we can do with our fire department?
And then, are there any other questions there? I know that was a lot of information, but the next slide shows the current structure versus potentially the new structure and the way it looks like for the city. So the top section there is the current lit structure that we're under now. And then the bottom is, you know, the Senate Bill 1 structure. So you can see, you know, everything ties out for 25, 26, 27, and then 128, assuming the new Senate Bill lit structure. You can see that overall, in the dark gray there in 2028, we show an increase of 151,000. But what that factors in, and this is very, very important for looking at this, the lit general purpose, that's maxed out at 1.2%. You guys have that control, so you could, you know, do that if you want. The lit fire and EMS, that assumes that the county would do that max of 0.4%. And then another even more important thing to point out here is the top section, that assumes what you guys are collecting net of your agreements that you have with the county. I know that they keep a portion of lit public safety, lit ED, and then I know you guys did the other agreement. I think it was 100 grand for the PIP?
The economic development.
The PIP, yes.
Yeah, so that's all factored in up above. So this is literally what you collect. Now, down below, this assumes that you get, you know, 100% of the 1.2% and 100% of your guys' 0.4. Obviously, you know, we're not attorneys, and I'm not sure how the language is within those ordinances, but I would think that they'd have to be looked at or studied or amended because of, based off of, I would think that it specifically would say lit public safety or lit ED that they're getting a portion of. Now, if you would still have to have those agreements in place, then you guys wouldn't, you know, surplus 151,000 under this new structure. It just depends on what those agreements are. Now, we quickly looked at, ran some numbers, and, you know, even the county just doing their 1.2%, they were going to collect, you know, a decent amount more than what they are under the current structure. And that's without even them exploring the option of the 1.2% for units under 3,500, where they could potentially keep even more of that. So I think there just has to obviously be open communication as far as between the county and the city, and, you know, all units. But I do want to point that out in this, in this analysis, that it assumes that you guys will collect that full 1.2% of the rate you guys control, and then your entire portion of the 0.4%.
Does this also assume? Does this also assume that, that it's the same wages for our county as we have now, and our city as we have now? And that, or does it have some inflation factor or some growth factor in it?
So Mickey, we looked at the average income per home, correct? And then the amount of homes within Frankfurt?
Yes, for the Senate Bill distribution purpose revenue, projected revenue. It was based off of the average home income, and then we used number of homes to calculate the total for the city of Frankfurt. And then in the future years, for both scenarios, we project a 3% increase year over year, essentially keeping the same distribution collection percentage to be comparable into the future. So you can, you know, you're comparing apples to apples. It's not, one's growing and one's not growing.
Well, our, our expectation then will be, because we are having development happen and housing, to have more housing units, we're having some addition of jobs nearby that are higher. Our expectation's probably going to be a little better than this, then.
Yeah, it could. You know, it's going to kind of depend on the percentage. So right now, every taxpayer within the county pays into, you know, the county pool, essentially. And then it, depending on the tax rate and the distribution calculation, it gets funneled back to the units. So, you know, the city could see, instead of seeing 0.4 of a dollar, maybe in this scenario, there you see, you know, 0.6 of a dollar. So it can be an increase. And if those taxpayers live within Frankfurt, you know, if that's where the growth is, Frankfurt would see, you know, an additional increase.
Okay, okay.
As far as the inter-local agreements go, I am working on collecting all of those, and I'll get those to you guys so that you can factor them into your projections. And I'll send copies to, of course, the mayor and the rest of the council as well.
Yeah, we'll take a look at them. I'm just wondering how we would exactly, it just depends on, I guess, exactly how they look. Because it is, is it a percent right now that they keep?
I know for the, the part, the, the public safety lit is, I don't have any of the others fresh in my mind.
That's for central dispatch?
Yeah, for the dispatch portion.
Is part of it for that bond payment? Is it a whole part of it for that?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, and then of course, the other one is just what we say 50% Steve, on the?
The economic development that we just passed a few months ago.
Yeah.
And then on the next slide here, we've really discussed a lot of this. But, you know, the county-wide lit rate, you know, is no longer set by the lit council. So the city can control its own 1.2% rate imposed on residents within the city. We mentioned the 0.4% for fire and EMS is set by the county. And then if implemented, the city would share this based off of population slash service area. The total lit rate that you guys currently have in place won't be applied across the entire county. Yeah, a lot of the stuff we covered on the previous.
Refresh my memory, what is the AGI? What does that acronym stand for?
Adjusted Gross Income.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, that's why we don't have that information. That's why we did our assumption based off of the average household income and the number of homes. So once that, you know, information's available, we can, you know, update this, this analysis, but.
And then if I understand that correctly, the city and county could have two different rates, right? Somebody could live in the county and pay a different income tax rate than somebody that lives in the city.
Yeah.
One other thing I want to point out is this takes effect in 2028. But to receive that income tax in 2028, the city would need to adopt that rate in 2027.
Okay.
So.
And then my understanding as of now, you have to, you have to approve that rate every single year, correct?
Oh, you do?
So just a little bit more information on the income tax on slide seven. We've been, I'm not sure how many counties that we've done the analysis for thus far, but a lot of what we're seeing thus far is that the majority of cities need a higher rate than 1.2%. And then a majority of counties actually need a lower rate than 1, or 1.2%. And then even on top of that, even though the counties need less than the 1.2%, they, on top of that, have the option of keeping, you know, 75% of the 1.2% rate for cities and towns under 3,500. So that next bullet point, so essentially, the county has a 1.2% county rate. And then if you take 75% of the 1.2% for the other, like, essentially a 2.1% county rate. And then as far as the fire and EMS goes, just seems like it'd be something where if, you know, if cities and towns are the ones providing that fire, that they would have control over that fire rate, but yet the county does. And then as far as the under 3,500 units, the majority of cities and towns, you know, in Indiana, you can see there are 75, or 72% of them fall under this, and they have no control of their own lit rate. And then also, it gets a little tricky as far as, you know, the last bullet point there, the tax should be limited to municipal boundaries, not countywide, because for those under 3,500, as far as how it's, you know, distributed, you would just think that you would still keep it within, like, that money is staying within that particular unit. And then as far as the special distributions, so the lit account or trust account balance, as far as, that's obviously, when we talk during the budget, we always say, you know, we're never going to factor that in. But it is nice to have that come in. It comes in around May and, or June-ish as far as from the county auditor. But I think for Frankfurt this past year, I mean, it, I know it was over 500,000. It might have been closer collectively amongst all of them to like, 700 grand. So keeping, you know, that in place, because that does help, even though you don't plan for it, it's nice to, you know, have that in there, especially if you can build, you know, a nice, solid budget, and then, you know, that comes in. So that's something that we'd like to see, you know, in there. And we are, you know, working with, you know, AIM and providing as much information as we can to them. We'll be presenting at AIM this year about the Senate Bill impacts. And I know that they, you know, AIM's working diligently in as far as, you know, recommendations, you know, once we, you know, saw this and, you know, we're running numbers. So hopefully, you know, down the road, there can be tweaks. But right now, this is, this is the way, you know, the Senate Bill 1 is right now. The next section, it pertains to, you know, the property tax side of things. So on the far left there, we have the homestead deductions. So they are actually phasing out. And while the bullet point right below it, the supplemental deduction is phasing in. So 2025, it was 48,000. And then in 2025, for the supplemental deduction down below, what is it, 35%? So, you know, it's going down eight grand. But while the supplemental deduction is phasing in, so eventually, homestead deduction will completely phase out, while then it'll be solely the supplemental deduction. Something completely new, since 2%, you know, they really don't get any deductions, there is deduction being phased in for 2% property. So 2% being, you know, ag or rental properties. And then other property tax impacts, a big one is the homestead credit. So that's either 10% of your tax liability, but it's up to $300, and that's a direct, you know, credit. So that is really contributing to, you know, the losses that we'll see, you know, in a future slide here. And then there's an over 65 credit, line and disabled. And then there's some other smaller ones that are being removed. There's, the 4% growth quotient is in place for 2026. I'm not sure what it's going to be beyond that. In our projections right now, we just carried forward 4%. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, what it's going to be beyond that. And then another big one is these last two, which it exempts new business personal property from the 30% depreciation floor. So, I mean, it can depreciate all the way, you know, to zero as opposed to it staying at the 30%. And then another one, the business personal property, the exemption, so the acquisition cost of it, that exemption increasing from 80,000 to 2 million for, you know, anything new in 2026. So ultimately, down in the red there, you know, what does this mean? Overall, tax assessments will fall if growth does not keep up with these changes. So essentially, if, you know, the AV is decreasing, and you're getting still your max levy growth, your rate's going to increase, which is going to increase circuit breaker, which is a loss for property taxes to units. So the next slide here, which, this changed slightly versus what I believe the mayor and Carol, it should be, yeah.
The last meeting.
Because the debt, as far as the full payment coming in, factoring that in as well. So what, this shows here in 2026 projections. So we showed the current, the way it is currently, and then under the Senate Bill 1, and show, you know, the difference. So there, and, you know, the yellowish color there, a projected loss in 2026, this is in millions, so of, you know, 460,000 in 2026. And all of these compared to what it would have been. So then in 2027, 870,000. And then in 2028 is when it increases, you know, drastically to the 1.85 million. And that is, a big reason behind that is the property tax relief. Because, you know, in the city, well, in the county, but specifically for the city, that income tax that property taxpayers, or I guess wage earners are paying, since your guys' circuit breaker, your rates are so high, they aren't necessarily seeing a direct benefit on their property taxes. It's lowering your circuit breaker, well, that's going away. So that's why you see that big increase in 2028. And then from there, it's, it's more just the percent increases. Obviously, there's still some deductions that are changing till it's fully phased in. But that's where the, the big hit is in 2028, assuming there's no, you know, changes to the way the Senate Bill is prior to then. I know that Carol had sent out LSA's projections, which we, I don't know exactly all of their assumptions. As far as our database goes, we pull all the parcels within, you know, Clinton County and re-implement all of those deduction changes. We look historically at every AV class, assessed value class, so whether it's 1%, 2%, 3%, to do an assumption as far as growth goes for each category and carry that forward. I mentioned the max levy growth, we show that moving forward. In ours, we did include the full debt payment for next year. I know that LSA had, there's, I mean, it was, it was really close, relatively close. I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to look at it yet. I have it here. So, you know, they were showing, you know, a little over 235, $234,000 loss in '26, and then in '27, 361,000. And then they're showing a big jump in 2028 as well of almost, you know, 1.5 million, which is because of that property tax relief. Now, obviously, going out that far, any kind of changes that may happen or a different AV growth would, could be, you know, the difference in our analysis versus theirs. Because you have to include some assumptions when you're going out, you know, multiple years like that. But yeah, and then the bottom section, it breaks it down by property class as far as, you know, the losses. But the main thing there is the highlighted section. So yeah, I'm, it doesn't, doesn't look good, obviously. But this is kind of the, not kind of, it's the hand that you guys have been dealt, unfortunately. And then, is there any questions there? I mean, there's just a lot of information behind it, but this is what, you know, it leads to, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I wish we had, you know, better news. But then the next slide just combines the property tax and income tax. And we, and we broke it down separately since the county has control over the 0.4 fire rate. We kind of put that down below. So first we have the net property tax impact, which that line literally is carried from the previous slide, the highlighted section. And then we have the lit impact. And this is hypothetically, you guys, the city implements the 1.2% rate and without any of the 0.4 for fire. Shows that, obviously that would be a deficit compared to your current structure and the combined impact there. And then down below, we show if the county would do the 0.4% for the fire rate, adding that in. So then the bottom section there in gray, it, it shows the overall impact between, you know, the property tax impact and the, the lit impact.
Clear as mud.
I know, it's.
No, no, that's not a reflection on you. You all have done.
It's, yeah.
A good job explaining it.
It's just, it's, it's never fun giving not great news, so.
Okay, from a proactive standpoint, we are, as, as the leaders, need to have strategy for, for how we're going to approach things. In the past, it's always been about increase AV, increase AV, increase AV. That doesn't seem to be the strategy. Should, should we be moving our strategy more toward more housing, more people? Is that, would that help impact this deficit better than, than, than the AV?
I mean, I, I think that would help, especially if, you know, with your guys' 1.2% that you control. And if you, you know, you're having people, more people, you know, living within city limits that are going to contribute to that.
Forever, forever, it's always been about increasing AV. That doesn't work anymore. It, our whole.
Well, it's still getting.
It, it, but it doesn't, it doesn't, and to the same degree it has.
Yeah, it's going to have less revenue.
Or is that, is that wrong? I mean, I, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, I'm a big boy.
Don't tell him, it makes him mad.
No, it doesn't. I've been married 48 years, I've been told before.
Well, I mean, I, I still think that obviously increasing AV as much as what you can will lower, you know, your rate needed, which is then again a decreased circuit breaker. I mean, so that's obviously going to help.
There, there also seems to be, or just from, from, from watching the market, housing is going up pretty fast as far as the, the values. I think we're going to have some big trending upward. Is that going to help us on, on the circuit breaker part of it? The fact that we have higher assessed value for the same houses?
I, I mean, just based off of how the math works, I mean, yeah, any, any increase in AV is going to help. You guys just collectively, you know, already have, not just the city, but you know, every, everybody within, you know, the taxing district or taxing districts, there's, I believe two of them, but have a pretty high, you know, overall taxing district rate. So, I mean, if you can increase, you know, AV greatly, I mean, it's going to, it's going to decrease your, your rate, which essentially would decrease, you know, your circuit breaker, so. It's still going to help, but I, but yeah, to your first point, as far as, you know, more homes, more people living within, you know, city limits, especially with this change in how income taxes are going to be, you know, collected and distributed, that's definitely going to help as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would think, you know, if, if you're building new homes, it means you're increasing your SS value, but also increasing your population base. So you get a, you know, a double impact on the revenue, so.
It looks like we have some work to do. Did you guys, after we met the last time, did you have that all together yet or?
We have discussed multiple different options.
Because I'd like to talk with you when you do get to there because I don't want to send something to the council that's just totally on base. Do you know what I'm saying?
And it's just going to, even things that might seem like not much, like as far as what you had on the agenda for the electric vehicle chargers, like anything, anything like that, I mean, might not seem like much.
But it's revenue.
But yeah, you're almost being, you know, forced to look at, you know, different areas within, because it is kind of limited what you guys can do.
Yeah, we are going to be limited on this revenues.
Did I understand that the growth quotient is 4% for this year?
That is, it is definitely.
Okay, that is the number, okay. I wasn't sure if you said that was estimated or proposed, okay.
Beyond that, I'm not sure.
Right.
And we always kind of use that to base our increase bars.
For raises.
For raises, but that isn't going to be able to happen this year.
Yeah, I, just because of the changes and deductions and, and then also just in general, I know property taxes is like your main, like one of two, but like depending on what income taxes is looking like and any of your other fees. Because, I mean, also depending on other u- units within your taxing district, hypothetically, the county or the school or somebody goes to, let's say, a new debt or something, that's could potentially raise circuit breaker. Yeah, your max levy might grow 4%, but your net collections may not grow 4%. So there's, it's, there's just a lot of, a lot of moving parts and. But yeah, we'll, we'll have revenue projections, we'll implement, you know, these impacts in there. Looks like we may be a little bit more conservative than LSA. And just like in years past, we'll just have to work through it and it's going to take some time, but.
Well, you guys have a lot more information about us particularly than LSA does. They're doing the entire state with.
Yeah, and I was looking through it quickly before we left the office. And that was the first thing that Mickey and I were talking about were, like, obviously the numbers don't look good, but it was refreshing to see that they were, you know, relatively close, but then they weren't, you know, spot on or anything like that. But we immediately were thinking, okay, well, what kind of assumptions do they have moving forward? And, you know, going even into 2026, are they assuming your guys' full debt, debt coming on? How it was half a payment this year? And, you know, what's their max levy growth or AV growth in the future? You just don't know what they have versus us. But, but yeah, we, I mean, we pulled every parcel and implemented those deduction changes and looked at historical AVs and have assumptions. We have a list of all of our assumptions. We didn't want to show you guys the entire database. It's, you know, it's, it's a lot. Yeah, I wish we had good news.
We do too. That's why I wanted him here this evening because before we go to our budget hearings next month, as you guys.
Can digest this a little bit.
I'll have to.
Yeah.
I have some tums if you need it. I have some tums if you need it for the digestion.
When do you think that you might have a chance to talk with me on some of those things that you're? I mean, I just don't want to take something just totally like we saw.
Oh, we'll definitely discuss before then. The reason I was hesitating is because I'm going on vacation.
Oh, sure.
Wednesday.
See how he is.
Coming back on Wednesday.
Could we, when you get back from vacation?
Yeah.
If we consult that, we just can't go on vacation.
Yeah.
That's fine, it might be a vacation if I stay home and just relax by myself.
We could call you in the middle of your vacation, give us a number.
That's fine, he does it all the time, no, I'm just kidding, he doesn't, he doesn't bother me. We can discuss it, make, make an eye in more detail. And then as soon as I get back, we can.
Okay.
We can, we'll make sure that we have it all ironed out before. Is it August 4th and 5th?
5th and 6th.
5th and 6th.
5th and 6th.
I don't have my.
Is it a Tuesday, Wednesday kind of deal or?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday, Wednesday. We finally pinned that down after a lot of effort.
And like we mentioned, you know, previously, I think during the department head meeting at one point, we'll just come up with a list and just see what it looks like, just some options and, and kind of go from there.
Okay.
Does anybody want to throw anything at me or?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We didn't, we didn't come prepared with missiles this time, but we'll, we'll be ready.
Yeah, I'd like to show something.
Oh, man. You guys started a little late.
Okay, are we done for the night?
Yep.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
This wasn't, this wasn't a meeting, so.
Thank you for good.
Oh, perfect.
My wife is running out of here.
Home run derby.
Oh, yeah, she went off. Very 59 years.
Well, it's okay.
Thank you, guys.
Put it on your lapel over here.
Yeah, I just want you guys to hear, you know, be fluent and then also.
Oh, my gosh.
Go injuries on the job. We say host to you home.
Good, because that, that'll, that'll help.
Yeah.
That, that kind of thing, that's going to be huge.
Well, I'm going to go home and finish supper.
Okay.
I assume that you have.
What kind of peppers are you having?
Actually, I'm not, she made a sausage burrito.
Oh.